Just click on the microphone real quick. Yeah, right there. And yeah. No, the microphone. Yeah, it's on the right one. Okay, we're good. All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Mendon zoning board. Make an announcement here, this meeting is being recorded virtually and anybody's online, right? So. Back. Do we have minutes? Can we read the minutes?
I'll take, I make a motion to approve the minutes of July seventeen from twenty five as written.
Second, full call votes.
And so yes.
Morali, yes.
But yes. Okay. In accordance with Master General Law, Chapter forty A, Section ten, the public hearing will be held on August twenty first, two thousand twenty five in the Mendon Town Hall at six P M for variance for seventy nine Hartford Avenue. The applicant trustee, Deidre Donovan, seeks relief from lot frontage one hundred and seventeen point two feet and lot width forty five feet. Who's here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm support. My name is David Bernasi. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
I can just make a quick note. I'm a non-voting member, but Mr. Bernasi is also my attorney.
So again, Deidre Donovan, she's trustee of the seventy nine East Hartford Realty Trust. This application relates to seventy nine Hartford Avenue East. It is a four point six seven acre parcel of vacant land situated on the southeastern side of Hartford Avenue. And it is a split lot. It is the front portion is situated in your general business or G B zoning district. The great bulk of the parcel, though, including the parcel that the applicant proposes to develop and use is situated in the rural residential or R R zoning district. The applicant proposes to develop and use the property as a single-family dwelling. In order to do that, she needs zoning relief in the form of variances from two of your dimensional requirements contained in section two point similar one of the zoning bylaw, those being minimum lot frontage. There was one hundred and seventeen feet actual versus two hundred feet required and minimum lot width, there was forty five feet versus two hundred feet required. In all other respects, the parcel needs or exceeds, and in most cases far exceeds the dimensional requirements in the bylaw. I would suggest to you that the application meets the minimum, meets the requirements contained in your bylaw and in the statute for the grant of a vote of a variance. This is a classic forked up Amerhead lot with the great bulk of property situated to the rear connected to Hartford Avenue East by one hundred and ninety five foot by forty five foot strip. Owing to this unique shape, a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would create hardship if the property be lost for its best use. The zoning relief can be granted without detriment to the public and without derogation from the intent and purpose of your bylaw. With that said, we're happy to try to answer any questions or questions concerns right now. Yes.
Currently, there's no development on this property, correct?
Correct. It's a baking parcel.
How long have you owned, has the LLC owned property?
Since two thousand twenty.
She just recently the trustee, though.
And there's the LLC, there's no common ownership of any adjacent parcels?
No, no, this is the only parcel. This is the only parcel remaining.
And it hasn't been before the Concon yet, or are you go jurisdiction on the Concon?
Well, this, it's heavily impacted by wetlands, but I believe that it would fight in so as not to have to to do that, but they, you know, if the zoning relief is granted.
Sure.
You need sixty thousand.
That would be there. I'm sorry.
You need sixty thousand feet anyway, above land. It looks like you have that.
I don't know if he shows that, Lily.
I can count. I'd say pretty close there, fifty eight to sixty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's not for us anyway.
No, that's what's planned.
My question is, so currently. Which is which is eighty one, because that's a duplex there.
Yes, duplex condo.
Yep, so they, that, their driveway, does they have an easement on that?
Yeah, they have these. Yeah, the trust granted them, he's been right, so they could sell that box.
Okay.
So. When the trust purchases property in two thousand twenty, was the intent always to fill the house?
I think the trust owned orbit, right? Is that correct?
It's the trust, the seventy nine.
Okay.
Trust, so it only had this piece of property.
Okay.
I'm the successor trustee and it became my I became the trustee in two thousand twenty when it came my way.
Did we know when the lot was split?
It is my understanding that it was split prior to the enactment of the zoning requirements issue.
I know it's been there for a long time. We had looked at it years ago to approach and go, I was bad, but.
My understanding, yeah, it exists prior to the zoning requirements coming into place, so it's not a self imposed issue.
Yes, I understand.
Quite a few years ago, somebody tried to get a variance for this lot, quite a few years ago. Then they withdrew it, whatever, never acted on it.
I mean, you're a successor.
Yeah. I was on board then, nothing ever happened.
So this was, this was a purchase and claim, you just became the.
Became the successor.
I think we have a problem.
It doesn't have a speed, right?
What?
Yeah. It's a D V N S?
I thought I thought.
What plane do you use?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not reading your actions.
Like twenty one.
Okay. Yeah, I have it right.
It doesn't, it's not really.
No, any other questions?
I've got no other questions then.
I agree.
Is there anybody in the audience that near butters, anybody? Name and address, please.
Steven Brennan, seventy seven Hartford Ave, wife Melissa. We also have the, from Ronald and Beverly at E one. They're just both, they're seventy nine eighty. They weren't able to make it, but they gave us a letter if and how that we could present it tonight.
Oh, sure, okay.
And I'm seventy five Hartford Ave, or to my point.
If you want to read that or bring it up.
Sure.
I live at eighty one Hartford Ave.
Okay.
I'm in more of a scheme fancy.
It's a letter dated August twenty first, two thousand twenty five. To whom it may concern, we are the owners of eighty one A Hartford Avenue, Mendon Mass, and unable to make tonight's meeting. We are against any building behind our house and houses of our neighbors. We have made our feelings known on the past and our feelings have not changed. Hope you take our feelings into consideration when making your decision. Ronald Desjardins and Beverly Desjardins.
That in the record? And is there any other from the?
Yeah, we, we have some major concerns. One of my concerns, we know that that's probably trying to be developed.
Should I come up there or stand?
Yeah.
Some of the fact is that it is. It's people have tried developing that on several occasions. It's have been able to pass the perks. And there's a lot of wetlands back there. I know at this time, we get any rain, we get any not just a ton of rain, but really any rain, our whole backyard gets extremely wet. And even now, it's until today and yesterday, we haven't had any rain. But when I go across the back of my property line, my lawn wall, my tires will still get wet because it's so wet back there. With the construction of a house back in that area, I'm concerned as how it's going to impact us. I know we do get some water in our basement here and there. With the disturbing the water table, that's a big issue with me because I'm very concerned. My septic is in the rear, my beach is elevated. If they start digging, you're gonna disturb the water table. The water has to go somewhere, it's gonna come up somewhere else. If they do an elevated foundation, now everything is gonna have to be pitched away from the house, which is gonna come to my property. It's always wet back there, so I'm very concerned with how it will impact my property. Not only that, but it's gonna be twenty five feet off my property and it's going down the whole side of my house. Two hundred feet is a pretty good area. Having a forty five foot space with a driveway and everything, it just basically will get rid of my whole side, yeah, well, not the side, yeah, but I mean that whole privacy that I have. We have some shrubbery and stuff there.
Yeah, but hold on, hold on, that's, that's their property. That be if they could, they could clear cut that.
Is where their property is so close to our house, I'm just concerned with that.
I, I understand, but they could just clear cut that right now and it.
Which is mine, this is mine, but I just, that's being built there, I'm just concerned with the impact we'll have on the property. Will I start getting more water?
So and again, and just one more thing, there's nothing that the Z B A can control. We're only here for the, the, the frontage variance, right? Whether or not the lot is buildable, that's up to planning and, sorry, a building department and conservation.
There's no limitations on this, but I would suspect that everything is in the flow of the act.
So.
Towards the rear of the slot, just by the way it's.
Yeah, we can pull up, yes, and again, it's not, it's not really, I definitely understand your concern and when you, you should bring that to the conservation commission and and, and she's probably gonna have to go to probably gonna have to go to planning board too, right?
Yeah.
Also, and planning board is going to look at all of that stuff, all of the drainage that's done by the engineer for the lot itself. This, this, there's nothing that, on those items that we can okay, for this discussion is, is all. I just didn't want you to go. Yeah.
Meeting's all about, now, frankly, I've never dealt with.
Sure.
So last time we dealt with it, like, was a few years ago, you better mention where they come in, they didn't have any of the conservation stuff. And they said, well, if you don't have it, you, you gotta come back with it, and they never did. So I just figured it probably goes.
So, yeah, so generally, because the flow, if, if you will.
Yeah.
The flow would be to come here first because you don't want to go spend all that money on engineering, then to find out that we're not gonna grant the variance, let's say, two hundred feet of, of frontage, right? So that, because you could go spend a ton of money. So this is the first stop to make sure that you can at least use a property and then you start to go through all the engineering process with your, with your site plan and as well with, with conservation.
Okay.
So those would be, and again, get the per test and all.
Yeah. All right, and so then the only thing I'm just concerned with is that it's so small, it's not even a quarter of what you need in order to do it. So like for the variance, two hundred feet for the project, correct? They have twenty five, so they're gonna be able to sort of.
The parcels, one, one, six, seven acre parcels.
Right.
This parcel is bigger than everybody here's, our was combining.
No, obviously, all they want for the parents, frontage.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, which, which, based on it being private, the lot being there prior to zoning.
Yeah.
Generally, these are granted in, in that sense. It's when you go and create, you're, so they say they owned all the lots in the front.
Yeah.
And they built all the houses and created all and built all the houses for you guys, right? And then made this one. That, that was created, you created the hardship yourself, but this has just been sitting here for, since. I don't know what year was.
Well, I think it goes beyond that. That was when this trust acquired it.
Right, when this was actually made, was likely back when, how old are you guys' houses, seventy?
Seven.
Yeah, that's likely when that, I mean, obviously, it would have had to have been made at that time, and your houses were that old, and that definitely dates. We believe it predates the zoning lease term.
So we, you know, once you, once we render our decision on this, if it goes forward, you'll have a pretty good opportunity to address groundwater issues, drainage, landscaping stuff, looks like the septic system may be in a buffer zone, so it probably will hit the conservation.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction.
Here, that would be helpful.
Absolutely helpful.
Yeah, so.
And a partner's notification will be sent up for those apartments as well.
And it hasn't been hurt by that yet, you know?
No.
Yeah, so there is a. Very.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
No problem.
And out of what did our, the applicant have been, you know, be opposed to maybe planting some, you know, some shrubs among that driveway? Create this hill, and I, and there wants to be a good neighbor. Or even some, you know, in front of the house or something to sort of shield the, the view of, you know, from some of the houses.
Yeah, so when you, when I would say that, when you go to planning, maybe, or, or find just advice, I mean, get with, especially your buddy, maybe, and see what they would maybe like, again, it would be that happens a ton, that people plant, plant acrobites or some, some, you know.
Factory jobs and screening.
Would you like to say something?
Yeah. It's had a description of when it was purchased in two thousand five. And I believe it was purchased for a small amount of, because of the number.
So, so a lot is, is. I can't say the same. It's right with a lot is worth. Sure, and it might be listed as unbuildable at the moment.
Affirmative.
Because it's unpermitted, there was, they needed to come for a variance. So if somebody's purchasing that lot, they, they might say, yeah, hey, I'll buy it from you now for X amount of dollars. I don't know the scenario, just.
This, this was a conveyance from a, a corporation into the trust and at the time, it looks like the principal of the corporation was the then trustee, so in two thousand, it was a considerationless transfer.
Got you.
What they paid back when, I don't have the deed from when they acquired originally.
It doesn't say, doesn't say anything about, oh, you're saying that it's a thing about not being unbuildable, I mean.
I think.
Why? No, it was in two thousand, if you're looking at the, the if you're looking at the deed from two thousand twenty, it's a considerate, to the current owner, it's a considerationless transfer because it was sort of a entity to entity.
I think they called it unbuildable because it didn't have the quiet frontage setbacks and all that.
Right.
Was unbuildable and without a variance.
Correct.
Correct. The deed doesn't, it was, maybe it was like a, like a listing for the property, the deed doesn't.
Yeah, in two thousand twenty, the transfer, the deed that I have was from a corporation of which the gentleman was the trustee of the trust who was conveying it from one end to the other, but they were controlled by the same person. So there's no consideration, it says a hundred bucks. So it says a hundred dollars in it, so it's, that wasn't, that wasn't indicative of what the value was, it was a consideration, consideration was transferred because it was transferred within.
Like a fine.
If you convey, it's a right, it's a right.
I will say, I will say, as, as of right now, without, without this variance being granted, it is, it is unbuildable.
Correct.
If this variance is granted, then becomes buildable, so at, at the time, yes, it was.
The zoning bylaws is to conserve the value of land and buildings. I'm assuming that, that includes a butters. Having a house literally in my backyard would be detrimental to my resale value, to my home value. Does anybody, I mean, do you take that into account?
So what are, what are you basing that on?
I don't think it would have any value, fixture of value at all.
Well, if you see, like, when we bought, so this thing said, I have a backyard, you know, blah, 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 and, you know, that's desirable. So if you have a house right in your backyard, I mean, that would be detrimental. I mean, that could turn somebody's way, I wouldn't, you know, I mean.
I, I don't. I don't think you could do that. So, so I mean, we, so I, I think we would need some evidence to, to, to that, not just a, a thought. So, because I can, you know, correct that with, with people who would rather be in a subdivision, right, because a subdivision is, you know, with Calisax and you say, like, you know, King Philopath or something down there that, and those houses are back to back, right? And, but those are houses way more desirable because they're on private roof, almost a private roof, right? So I don't know, I don't see how a house in the back and, and if the listing listed that this land was, you know, private land for you, then you're, the agent was, was misleading.
I don't think there's any value. I didn't, I didn't have to get it, didn't have to get an expert to say it, but I've got a lot of these things, including appeals and, and when they go in for it, try to prove that there's some change in value, it doesn't exist, there is no, there will be no change in value.
You have to.
Based on this particular element.
I would have to hear it from someone, like, they get appraised or something.
Correct.
Well, it's, it's very subjective, you know, just playing in here.
That's not personal, buying the house.
Yeah, that's true too.
There's banning for every seat.
That's right.
But, but at the same time, not, not allowing this makes this, makes for possible uses. You know, the, the board needs to sort of.
Well, that on the busy road, so the frontage is gonna be taken part of eighty one's driveway for like duplex. The frontage.
Could there be sharing the same project?
Just sharing the.
Yeah, you were saying driveway.
Well, because.
Well, not necessarily the same driveway, the same project.
Is there a driveway, is there a driveway there already?
They have.
Yes, they have an easement.
There are the easement in that, the driveway.
My, my client granted them an easement, so they granted, develop their property, so without the easement that she granted, they would have a.
They wouldn't have a driveway.
Correct.
And so the new driveway would be built off the, the existing driveway.
They don't know that that has been.
Okay, yeah, but either way, there's an easement there.
But they would be sharing the, that frontage.
Has to subject down the road.
Right.
So, I'm sorry, you said you're seventy seven, right?
Yes.
And so what I'm seeing, so your frontage is one oh seven at a hundred, hundred and eight feet. Is that sound about right?
Honestly, I think so.
Because that's basically what we're proposing here.
It looks like the frontage on this parcel, I heard.
Yeah. This, as a point of reference to give you some scale, you, you'd have the same frontage as this lot, enjoy the same frontage that you have on your lot. So it's you know. Great.
You know.
Consistent with the.
Like, I saw the surveys out there, I saw the markings, but I wasn't able to see the markings the full width of it, I don't know.
I have that plan here, we could show you if you'd like.
Yeah.
I'd scale it off here, one hundred eighty.
Was it the one that's online in the?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I've seen it.
This one right here.
Is the other one?
Yes.
Yeah. The only. That is the, my concerns.
That's right.
Driveway, it's the same as their.
Is, is, no, the amount of, of land that abuts the, the public way of your.
Unhappily.
Because based on, it looks like it goes wide. Are you talking about the, the wide end of it?
Yes, right.
It doesn't have the same width, it's just a, a, more, actually more.
More, yeah. Yeah, so it just, it does fit the scale of that, that area. And the name, you know, the other neighbors have about a hundred and fifty feet. And then your backyard, you know, it's about a hundred and sixty feet from the back of your house to the rear property line. I don't know if that's wooded now, I can't quite tell. Okay.
We really came up with anything, because we go into the septic.
Okay.
Yeah, why it's.
So with the septic, you'd have to discuss with the.
Yeah, that all comes into.
Or color color. And the wetlands, you'd have to discuss with the Concon. I know, in the past, though, we have made variances contingent on vegetation as a barrier, correct?
Yeah, so if this is going in front of.
The planning board does that.
Board.
We've done it in this board.
We can condition an approval with some suggested language that you get, there's a mutually agreeable screening plan or something like that. I don't know how much jurisdiction we have on that, but you can definitely put it in, you can put it in there as a condition that said, you know. You guys.
A raised bed with a number of acrobites between the.
I think that it would be mutual, again, I mean, it's a term mutually agreeable, and then the planning board will also.
It'll get deeper.
When, when you're gonna have to get, when you go for those, when you go to those. They'll, they'll ask, that's when you can get more detail on the, on the planning of what the engineers want.
They'll want a vegetation plan and all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you definitely get quite a few looks at this at a much, much more, much deeper level with regard to the grading, drainage, per test, the septic design, so you, you know, with regard to like the control of the water table and where, where their pervious surface drains to, that would be where you want address those concerns.
If we even be willing to consider if, if things don't work out or something. Because we have, we've already been looking into it personally. Because we're just kind of like, we know they've tried multiple times to get in there. And we're so concerned with what the impact it could have on our property or, and with water and everything, that even recently, my wife's been trying to find out who is in charge of that property, because it's difficult in order to make, we can't no doubt, but even to try and
So.
Consider purchasing it if, if they're willing to, but.
Discuss that.
It's just a, just a thought.
Yeah, the, you know, with regard to water table issues, advice for both parties would be to substantially document your existing conditions before you stick shovel in the ground because you know, you don't want to exasperate an existing condition or own a, a condition that may, may exist. And, you know, they'd be responsible to make sure that there's no stormwater going onto your property from their property that doesn't already happen. And if there are drainage issues, we might actually be able to address some of those, which we're ready.
And I would think everything sort of drains back towards the.
Okay, yeah.
The preservation will look at all that.
Yeah.
That goes down our property forever.
Okay.
Because it will be pushed back on.
Say it again, this is drainage.
I think everything.
You're talking about from the road. And if you have property, they're probably draining onto.
All of these parcels will probably drain one, two, seventy nine.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than vice versa.
Right, that actually is actually a, it's a reverse problem, that's actually water. Well, the thing is that water from your property is not supposed to go to. So that's the kind of, the rules, so. Who would you talk to about that? I mean, I would have to say.
It would be highway.
Well, I mean, highway, the, because there's it's just, well, I know on the, on the closing side of the road, there's, there's swells, there's, it's like now, recalls.
Not enough. A little, a little there is, where we are, it's all. Not enough, further up a little, there is, where we are, it's all flat.
Yeah, no, I understand, that, that, I'll be on the opposite, on the opposite side.
On both sides.
I think.
I mean, that, that's, that's kind, that's highway, but I mean, there's, what is there, is it, is there?
I don't know, though.
It's, it's, in, in, in the winter, we get a little bit of melt.
Yeah.
My, my, my son and daughter will go up there with ice skates, skate, cause it's.
Yeah, 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 I've seen right there.
And that, and that, that, without big surveys, if my kids escape my backyard, because there's three, four, six inches of water back there freezing over.
Well, maybe it's not running off now, I mean.
It's not, it's dead, it's set.
No, but I'm saying.
They're running in more.
But maybe it's not even running off, maybe it was when they built it that way, that that's why it's sitting in their property, then, again, what she may do there may help the closer body properties, depending on what, what, what is done, like, again, runoff is not supposed to lead your property into another property, so.
Any.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay.
Have anything to, would that be like?
That would be Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission, yeah.
What kind of habit that's a?
Is the, um, so that's like the National Endangered Species Program, um, you know, there, if this is, uh, it's targeted, already did, it's targeted property already, is it on a? For the best. Uh, yeah, so, it, it, there's a, a map online, uh, I think it's the National Endangered Species Program, and, um, it'll show like areas that are, are mapped, not necessarily, uh, marked out, but it's like target areas, I guess they call it. And then it's up to the applicant to identify if there's any endangered species, things like that, and you know, mitigate, but that's a whole other filing if, if this is actually mapped, I don't know if it is. That, the, the applicant may or may not know, right?
I don't know.
I don't know, uh, but the conservation will definitely tag that, and so, so, I think there's even a, a place on the, um, NOI for that, you know, checking out that it hasn't been flagged for endangered species, so, but do you, you know, do you do diligence? All that stuff's available online, and, um, have there been any sightings of any endangered species out there?
Oh, I don't know, I.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm. Many turtles, um, but, you know, it's possible that.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, they're, they're, I mean, you know.
Yeah, so if there's a protected, um, species out there, it, it likely will be mapped. Um, I mean, most of their work, it looks like, is well out of the wetlands, it's in the buffer zone at best for grading, it looks like, um. So they're not like impacting whole, they got a huge piece of property here, and they're, they're just putting a little, big as a house here.
I think that's just a rough.
You're kind of getting off the subject here, really.
But that was, it's a, a proposal to show, the board, I don't know that there's any specific plan yet on size.
Man, so, yeah, there would, there would be some conservation commission that, this would be discussed with.
That's gonna be the only first step.
Yeah, right.
And discuss.
Right. So.
That counts in size, that's all gonna vary depending on what happens when, you, some of the engineering.
Right.
Any other questions or concerns? Schematic at best, probably at this point.
Yes, I think the engineer is the terms again, as conservation comes in, they'll lack a much to spot, because we can.
Yeah, conservation, you know, where the.
With, with septic and all that. I think that's the engineer's best, best, appropriate place for the house to be on that part.
This is strictly, uh, a plan to look at, uh, distances from property lines, things like that, all of the, the zoning by law requirements, then the other boards will address the more technical aspects of the, the site work in the building. Um, no other question, concern, questions about this?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
We'll call both.
Morally, aye.
Vanshul's aye.
Clark, aye. This hearing is closed.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to, um, approve the variance, uh, for the set, setback on seventy nine Hartford Ave East. Um, intention upon some mutually agreeable, um, vegetated, vegetative buffer, um, between the, the driveway and the neighbors, um, for the purposes of, um, topography, shape of the lot.
Second.
We'll call both.
Morally, aye.
Vanshul's aye.
Clark, aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks. Big one.
That's great. Anything else here? In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section ten, a public hearing will be held on August twenty first, two thousand twenty five, in the Mendenham Hall at six P M, for variance for Katie Upstridge Road. The applicant owners, Edward and Fred Boucher, secretly from the front setback from fifty feet to four feet, and from the side setback, twenty feet to ten feet for the construction of the garage. Uh, is the applicant here?
Yes.
He's. Yeah, you're lucky. Good bands. All right, your name?
Uh, Edward Boucher. So, um, what we're looking to do is, uh, we put out, and they, on the road, uh, we need to put a garage in um, with a minimal setback in the street, um, because, uh, uh, obviously, we're on, on water with, uh, topography, slope straight downhill towards water, so the only place we could really put it would be close to the road, uh, and we also want to look at the setback on the, um, the right property line, which is the Alcindor parking lot. Um, ten feet, so there's already like a, just a kind of a dead space between their fence and my shed where nobody uses. Um, just so it would, uh, work well with the current curb cut in the road, um, so.
Okay. It's a good subject, minutes.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, yeah.
So, I, I, I took a ride by here today, uh, I didn't go out and talk to them.
We would have been fine.
Uh, just cause I, I, I couldn't think of your house, I'm.
Yeah, you think of the office next door, right?
Yeah, and I'm like, there's already a garage there, I'm like. And they built it.
Can't tell you how many times I got, oh, Fred's saying, you gotta tell me to sort of move the apartment from a minor route. It's my house, yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I, I'm, so I, I did it, and, um, and, and I'm not an engineer by any stretch of the imagination, but this proposed redo of what they wanna do there, in my opinion, is way better than what's there now.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, for, not that we need, that we should be talking about conservation reasons, but this being on a lake, just the way that, that slope is there, it's a cliff. Um, it's much safer, this is a, a, a much better layout and use, in my opinion, I'm voting member, but just took a look at it and see.
I looked back, I looked back today and.
Yeah, if you just look at the, uh, plan, it gets a little close, and then when you see it, it's, it's like.
Yeah, it's, 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 you know, the toughest thing is the driveway, you know, you come up, you gotta come up a hill and take a hard ninety right to get along, and then you pull it out on a dry stain on a snowy day.
So, so we're moving the existing garage?
There is still existing, okay, we're mainly a new garage, right, so this is the product of the street model.
So this is.
That's staying in.
That's literally right, right.
Standing garage is not my problem, yeah, technically, technically, it's right on the line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the way that his driveway is, that what he's proposing to do with the new driveway, and then keep the garage, and making it level up top is way better than that now. Cause I'm assuming you're gonna have to retain it all there?
Yeah, I'm gonna put the painting wall there, we're hoping to have additional parking in, and so people don't have to park on the street when they come and visit, cause right now, you know, we can barely fit the, the cars we have in.
Absolutely, and, and, again, it, it, it's sa- safety reasons alone.
No, that makes sense. I'm picturing it now.
Yeah. That one year, we had those January snows, I mean, it was like twelve foot high.
Right, right.
And then, you know, if I was on, uh, a cap, they have something I might not worry about, roof sixteen, they come flying around the corners of it.
Yeah, I don't care, so.
Makes sense to me. Um.
Any, no, no questions from the audience here?
Is anybody online?
They answered me. Okay, I, I actually joined in, because I need to share this.
I was gonna say, I guess.
Well, then I will, uh, make a motion to approve this variance.
Close it.
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to close the hearing first of all.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Morally, aye.
Vanshul's aye.
Clark, aye.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the variance, um, as applied for, uh, for the purposes of shape, topography, uh, and some other conditions.
Second. We'll call vote.
Morally, aye.
Vanshul's aye.
Clark, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Just motivation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is the easy part.
That, that, well, that's what everybody said, yeah, that's the one that had me sweating.
Truly, it's easy.
I had no idea who was gonna show up, I saw my bars, it's like, I don't even know these people, like, yeah. Luckily, luckily, I think, I think, uh, there was somebody who, like, some realty company, I'm guessing it might be, um, who they had on Superior, and I guess, like, they, there's like, there are names like four places, so I think, like, they caught them.
Oh.
They don't, they don't seem far there, a few others, but, yeah, so. All right, awesome, well, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nothing new to discuss? Great.
Except we'll be doomed, have one coming over, and now, you will, sorry, now.
Can you put that with, um?
These end up just like, thrown out, that's like something.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Like, maybe some in the papers, some in the, I'm not. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
We'll call vote.
Morally, aye.
Vanshul's aye.
Clark, aye. Meetings adjourned.
Guys, seems a month.
Yeah, yeah, but, not called.
Well, yeah.